Let's call our meeting to order, please. It's about 7:05. We have a couple of hearings tonight, which I expect will be quick and clean. For the record, we are missing Mr. Levitt and Mr. Oliveri, although if the past is any indication of tonight, they'll drift in. For the record, I am making an audio recording, and I believe that Lake Cam is making a video recording. We have the microphones out, and I know that we have people in the back office here doing the work. So we'll open the two, or one of the two, Crosby hearings at 7:15, followed by the other Crosby hearing. And I don't think we have minutes to read tonight. There was some problem with the printing, so we'll get the next one. According to Kathy, we have some business next month, unfortunately. So we will have a meeting.
When are you going to have it next month, and what date?
Do you have a calendar? Oh, he's going to beat you to it. December 19th? I don't know when he wants to leave yet.
We probably have a meeting on January 2. I saw another petition coming in.
Oh, joy.
Yeah. Just letting you know.
December 19th. I'm over here.
Oh, joy.
Oh, joy. That's what I tell them, so they're happy. Makes their holiday for them. Makes the day when I'm not around. No respect. No respect.
Joey, I noticed you're sitting far away from the hearing today.
Well, he sat there, so he has the honor.
No need to hit him.
That's why he's sitting there. He felt left out. You're always picking on me. He wanted to get into the action. I'm waiting for my buddy John to come in.
Haven't yet. He's here?
Yes, I told him.
He's here. I thought you were going to be here, Joe.
That's right.
That's why I showed up.
That's right. Better late than never, huh?
He's getting too early now. A few minutes before the hearing can actually open.
How are you doing?
Good, how are you?
Good.
When are you going back down to Aruba?
March.
March? Leave this year, huh?
Oh, I was going March.
Oh, even earlier.
Danny McCaughan Terry goes October.
But he doesn't, but he doesn't go as long as you do.
He goes three weeks.
Yeah.
They go two to four. He's going to Barbados this year for two days instead. Go to Barbados and then go to Aruba. I've been there, yeah. We're going to, well, we may go after the holidays. I don't know. See what happens. We're going to meet by seven in Cancun in February.
It's not bad. Nice to meet.
He says, "Don't we go to Mexico?" I says, "Okay." Called back today. I got my tickets.
You called him back, or he called you back?
He called me. I got my tickets. Okay, I guess we're going to Mexico.
How long are we hoping?
Ten days. I am sure as usual, you know?
Yeah.
All-inclusive, trips besides, because you could spend your money, play golf and everything.
Tough life you lead, Joe.
I bought those years ago. Paid me to go now. I think it's like five hundred bucks for those time shifts. Next, we got BZOs next in December. One in December, we have BZO.
I think it is BZO.
Yeah, I did say something about BZO.
No, he put it in. He asked me today if it was on yet. I said it wasn't posted.
No.
But they didn't get it posted in time. Because he's building a new house.
Oh, it's his own house?
Yeah. Over in...
You get built a new house every 10 years?
Right off of, uh, 105 there.
What else?
What's the one, where's Garby lives? One next to Garby.
What else? Is that where it is?
The next one.
Pine Bluff.
Pine Bluff.
He's in Pine Bluff. They kind of, I've been over there for a while. There's an old dilapery, I think that's falling apart, you're going to tear it down and put a new one in. Quiet in the home front?
Did you get all your leaves taken care of, David? Did you get all your leaves taken care of today?
I did.
I did mine four times already. One maple tree that is still shedding.
It's classed?
It's shed until...
I never made any of the classes.
I didn't. End of last week.
I wish.
Yeah. Then shed. Yeah, folks are gone, but this, this big sucker in it didn't do anything. Of course, its neighbor's yard's full up, and he hasn't done anything yet. So the wind, I'm hoping the wind blows from the south. If it blows to the north, it carries over in my yard. I got my, I got my blower today, and I blew them back.
If you notice, Joe, that night, those trees came in late.
Yeah.
And I'm assuming...
Yeah. Yeah, yellow maple. It's a big sucker, too.
It is Lake Cam, sir.
I put a big tarp out, and make another tarp. I did, I have a pile in the back, it must be as high as that ceiling now, and the back with leaves.
According to my watch, it's 7:15, so we can open our hearings. We have two hearings tonight, both for the same petition, for two lots that are adjacent to each other. And all of these are, so you will not participate in the voting. I think voting on these tonight will be John, Joe, Dave, myself, and Mr. Yubansky. So we'll open the first hearing at 7:15. The Lakeville Zoning Board of Appeals, acting in accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter 48, is amenable to conduct a public hearing on Thursday, November 21, 2013, at 7:15 p.m. in the L. Public Library, 4 Precinct Street, upon the petition of Gerald Crosby for a special permit for all construction under Lakeville's law and a lot that is in business. The property is located on Freetown Street, M34-B2-L1, which I believe also has a number of 34-2-11-01, formerly part of Lot 11, as provided by the Lakeville Bylaws. And you will be presenting the petition. We do have some communication, I think all of you have seen. I could read through the communication we have in this, but in essence, the town departments seem to be in favor. The zoning, excuse me, the board of... Have no concerns in regards to petitions, so I can have no comments this time, except that zoning bylaws are informed. The Conservation Commission says all proposed work on these lots falls outside the hundred-foot buffer zone to bordering vegetated wetlands, therefore, no permitting from Conservation Commission is required. We have two from the Board of Health, an early one that is dated November 6. The Board of Health is not meeting again until November 20. I agree with the soil evaluation and percolation testing for these lots, who attended this in that in prime engineering back in May 2013. Both lots pass state and local requirements with respect to soils and percolation. We do not have detailed septic specification plans submitted to us yet for review, so I cannot say these lots, we don't state local septic design requirements at this time. That was from Larry Harry. And then we have another letter dated today, sent by Larry Harry to Mrs. Crosby. Says, "Recently, we received plans for a proposed three-bedroom dwelling and associated private well and subsurface sewage disposal system for Lot 1 on Freetown Street, as referenced above. Your engineer requested one local Board of Health regulation variance as necessary for this particular site to allow your leachant system to be greater than 24 inches above ground. After discussion at our public hearing, public meeting on November 20, 2013, it was decided that your proposed construction and associated ZPA petition would pose no public health threat, and your variance request is therefore granted, provided that construction is completed according to the proposed plan, more specifically, that which pertains to the building setbacks, as shown, that meet both residential and commercial setback requirements, and your proposed grading, which shows drainage swales to prevent any runoff from flow onto abiding properties." And then he says, "Please note, all divergences and variances or failure to meet state and/or local regulations and setbacks disallow any increase in flow with this particular system, which is limited to 330 gallons per day maximum." This is again signed by Mr. Harry. And then finally, we have from the Building Commission, dated two days ago, "Year's EBA, the Building Department has no concerns regarding these petitions. All parameters, block size, setbacks are covered, so it would be compliant. This Freetown Street property is well-suited to residential use and should not have any negative impact on the community. It is this department's recommendation that special permits be issued to lots 1 and 2 of Freetown Street for the purpose of simple family detachmental in accordance with Section 746 of the town Lakeville zoning bylaws, signed, Nathan D. Darling." And I don't think we have any information before us now, either in the package or presented by other committees, that conflicts with this point of view. And I don't know if you have anything additional to add to what we already know. The lots conform completely for residential use, except their own business.
That's correct.
And the dominant building characteristic in the neighborhood is residential, with the exception of Baby G, which is closed, I understand. Not functioning? Is that right? Mr. Evans? You with us?
Yeah, I don't think they're operating anymore.
So we have even less business now than we had before in the area.
A beaver across the street, that's about it.
Right. Okay. Comments, questions, or concerns from the zoning board?
They meet all the setbacks. The only thing you had was the residential in a business area of 60-foot setbacks, and they meet that, so...
They meet everything.
They meet everything.
Comments from the, the audience?
Well, I live on Smith Circle, which is right across the street from this particular location.
For the name, your record, sir? For, for the record?
George Morehead.
Your name, would you?
Yep. And I live on the first house right on Smith Circle.
Right.
And I don't know if you people have been, I know Janice lives around here, but I don't know about the rest of you people, whether you've spent any time sitting there. I'd much rather have a business there, to tell you the truth. And the reason why I would much rather have a business there is because there's enough noise and traffic on that particular street already, and in that surrounding neighborhood. And to add two more residential houses would just make it worse. I know you don't live there, but I live there. And to have a business, most of those businesses only open during the day, I work during the day.
Can you...
I don't, I don't, when I come home at night, they're closed.
What would you say to a Dunkin' Donuts, sir?
I don't care. I'd rather have a Dunkin' Donuts.
It's quieter.
To tell you the truth, there's enough noise in that neighborhood already.
It's quieter.
There's plenty of noise in there. Nobody wants to do anything about it, so I'm here voicing my objection. There's too much noise in that neighborhood, too much traffic on Freetown Street, the school empty out, up and down that street all day long, people driving up and down here with their radios, pounding away.
ATV's.
Rattles the windows, people driving ATVs all over the place, modified ones, you must hear it.
I do.
All the time. Baby G, I'd rather have the business there. When the business was there, the only thing you heard was a couple of beeping trucks at night when they backed up. Now all they do is run modified ATVs back and forth, not all day long, but for hours, hour at a time. So I don't want any more residents. Don't want them anymore. You know? I've complained enough to the different boards.
All right, good. Thank you for your...
But that particular area, and I'm also concerned about the fact that, you know, I don't know what kind of soil is in that particular location, or what kind of bedrock is in that particular location, but it seems to me that there's quite a bit of, quite a bit of ledge, or what I would appear to be ledge there. And I don't know, you are the engineer, you were in there, right?
Yeah.
And I'm assuming that you're going to have to do some kind of excavation by way of...
That would be true for anything you put in, the Dunkin' Donuts or the...
No, no, I'm asking about, do you plan on doing any blasting yet?
No, that's not, that's not on the table right now. I mean, until they dig in for the foundation, they won't know what they actually have to do. But blasting is not on the table at this point.
We're not talking about the houses, we're talking about the use of the property, residential versus, versus business.
No, no, I understand that, but I, I'm also concerned that, I'm only one voice, and I know you're sitting there, whatever decision you make tonight, I'm concerned about if you, if you decide that you're going to allow this special permit, that I would hope that the board would do something to assure that whatever surrounding properties are there are not going to be in any way damaged by the fact that they may have to do some serious excavation in there in order to put themselves...
Well, let me ask you, let me, let me ask you a question. Suppose they wanted to put it in Dunkin' Donuts and required blasting, they wouldn't have to come to this board?
No, I know that.
So you wouldn't, you wouldn't even know about...
But you know what? Dunkin' Donuts would have a deep pocket.
It still wouldn't, it still would get rid of the noise. I'm, your concern, you're concerned is somebody's driving ATVs on someone's property. If it's their own property, it's not a problem. If it's someone else's property, now that gets into being a legal thing, a problem. So the question is, is that if there's that much noise that bothers the neighbors, are the neighbors reporting it to the authorities and is anything being done? I mean, that's an avenue to go to, because I think this board, all we're looking at is someone saying, "I have property that I'm going to change, I want to put a house on that meets all the specifications." And as far as I know, we have nothing to go by except those regulations, and if they meet all the regulations, we really don't have much to go by.
Well, that's why...
But if you're concerned with the noise, as far as, you know, people, like the kids going up to the school, there's a lot of that, there's buses, that's a bad, that's just a bad road all the way. And there's a lot of people on that road. The question you got is, two more houses of people moving in are going to add a little bit of noise, business is going to add a little bit of noise, but it's not going to get rid of what's there. And if you have a problem with what's there, I think you have to go to the authorities and say, "Look at it, somebody's driving, making noise, we got to control it." That's a selectman's office. I think, and if I was, if I was there having your problems, I'd be going to somebody else.
He's already done that.
We can't, we can't...
We can't do anything, but I, I mean, I don't think I can do anything about that.
No, but I can, but I can come here because it's a public hearing, and that's why you advertise to come here and ask why...
I appreciate that.
Why, you know, this isn't a, a, a right thing to do in particular.
One of the things we sometimes do, but we have to, we have to control ourselves in making decisions, is to make a decision today on what might be tomorrow, or might happen tomorrow. I could argue with you endlessly about the amount of noise and traffic and congestion that a Dunkin' Donuts, as an example, would cause. I think they're one of the worst traffic hazards that exist. Great coffee, great donuts, I go there often.
There wouldn't be a Dunkin' Donuts on that street.
I don't know.
That's not what would happen there.
We don't know.
I do, because you know why? There's that little market that's down here, and I don't know how Cisco, the poor guy is making it down here, but everything that's been there for the last 10 years that I've lived there, the last 12 years that I've lived there, hasn't survived. And you know why? Because there's no business there. That's why.
There's no traffic.
There's no business. So nothing is going to survive there. The bank couldn't even survive there. They got bought out by Rockland Trust, and they closed the branch. You know why? Because it didn't do any business.
That's one reason. I took that out of there.
And so I, I understand that, it's, you know, the property is...
So your point, if I may, your point is that you think that a business would have less traffic than a home? Is that your point?
Better neighbors than...
Yeah, much better neighbors than the, than what's around here now.
Thank you very much.
Much better.
Ma'am?
I just, my sale your bricks, 2023, sale your bricks, 2023, Freetown. Once you put a residence in there, do they, can they run a business out of their house? Or what happens at this point?
People, anybody in town, that's a, that's a good question, it's a little different question. Anybody in town, any one of us can have what's called a home occupation. We can. The general concept of a home occupation is it's a way to allow you to start a certain type of business, and it has to come to us first, a certain type of business. And once that business expands, you, the expectation is that the business will move to a commercial area that can handle a larger business. There are supposed to be very tight controls on what constitutes a home occupation in terms of floor space and parking and so forth. So the answer is yes, sort of, somebody could have a business there. A, for example, a person could run a small one-person accounting or CPA office, or a law office, or a seamstress could have a small business there, but you wouldn't find a manufacturing company there.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I think if this goes residential, they build a house there, they follow the residential rules, not the business. You can't run a business out of your house, in that house, because now it's considered residential. So even if it's a business area, you're converting it to basically residential for that property.
But it is on, it is on business.
Well, sure, if after the houses went in there, if someone wanted to like buy up, if something happened and someone bought the second house and did something and wanted to put a business there, what kind of...
The property, the property remains zoned for commercial use and has a special permit for a house. If somebody bought the property, wanted to take the house down and put in a Dunkin' Donuts, that would be permitted, because it's zoned for business.
Well, Don, I don't even think they necessarily have to take the house down, they just would not be able to use the house as residence. You wanted to buy the house and just turn it into...
Yeah.
So to your point, if they started out as a small home-operated business and decided, "We want to turn it into..."
That's true.
"...a manufacturing company because we're doing..."
Couldn't have a manufacturing...
Well, not a store.
Store.
Anything that's within our bylaws for what can be done on the business zone, they could turn around and turn it into that, because it's not, you're not changing the zoning, you're just giving a special permit to allow them to build.
But they couldn't live in the house then?
They couldn't live in the house.
The purpose of this, the purpose of this bylaw is to control people who want to put a home in amongst many, many stores. That would be less attractive and less useful, and could pose problems. We have a number of places in town that have, that are zoned commercial, but are residential in character and have residential neighbors and have asked to build a house on a, on a commercial property, and we permitted it in a number of places. An example is at the other end of Bill Marks's property, which is the other end of this area that's been zoned business some 30 or so years ago, and we gave a permit for a house at that other end, which is in fitting because it's all houses down there. Mr. Evans?
Area 16, Freetown Street. I'd just like to say that I have no objection to these two houses, and I think it would improve the neighborhood. I've had enough issues with other businesses in the past, as you well know, so I'd welcome the two houses.
Mr. Costello's not coming back?
He was quieter than the neighborhood. I don't think that Gary makes a lot of noise, you know? I have to qualify that we rent us space from him. Gary Lawren, Dr. Beaver, that's quiet.
Yeah, they're very quiet all day.
They're very quiet.
That's right.
Much quieter. Baby G was noisy.
Still is noisy.
Was Costello noisy?
Unbelievable.
And they, and they had all kinds of chemicals on the ground.
And smashing and manufacturing.
What you don't know, we don't know what's going to happen tomorrow. With a house, we have a better idea of what would happen tomorrow, I think.
I still think if you had that kind of noise that you're really upset about, you have to take other avenues, because...
It doesn't help. Let me tell you, it doesn't help this stuff. I don't know what your name is. You want to come down, you can come down and stay at my house for a couple of days.
I think he needs to get together with Mr. Jones.
There is a problem where, where somebody is revving motors and...
You know, they're, they're...
At all times of the day, I can't figure out.
You know, I've had, they're driving ATVs back and forth...
On the street, by the way.
Modified in the Baby G parking lots, it's paved now, they're making a racket, you know, people are just driving around on them things, there's another property that they do.
I'd be pressing the police so much, they'd be tired of it.
They don't bother coming.
Have you been to the zoning enforcement officer?
For what?
To lodge a complaint.
For what?
For noise.
I'm sick of lodging complaints. I, 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 I need enough complaints in this town about noise, and nobody seems to want to do anything about it.
Who?
You know? That's the deal. And that's why another residential property...
So the answer is no, you have not been to the zoning enforcement officer.
Listen to me, you give me somebody's name who's actually going to do something, and
I will go talk to that person.
Try Nate Darling, he's our, he's our building inspector, he's the enforcement, Nate Darling.
Yeah?
He's the new building inspector, and he's the enforcement officer.
He's going to do something.
You don't know unless you ask him.
Okay.
When we set out, we set out.
You have a new selectman, go to the selectman and ask him, say, "Look at it, here's our problem."
All right, is there any other discussion directly related to...
This property, yes. I'm trying to voice my opinion about residential...
You have, several times, and I thank you, and we're done, unless you have additional information and not a repeat of the same.
Well, I'm just...
Your point is that you're concerned about the potential for noise with a residence that would not exist with a business, and I think we heard you.
Well, I just think that, you know, you could sit there from that side of the, of the table, and I know that you want to approve this particular request. I know you do, and I understand that. But until you, if you actually wanted to make an informed decision about doing that, you would take the time to go out there and spend some time in that area to see if, in fact, doing this is in the best interest of that neighborhood.
I drive the road every day.
Driving, it doesn't matter.
I don't, I don't live next to this property, but I drive that road every day.
Driving, it doesn't matter. You drive up and down, past it, everybody does. It's, 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 it's very busy around here, there's enough noise, there's enough residential properties, there's enough business properties, there's enough of everything.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I don't know if our, in a sense, what you're looking for, in a sense of growing up and sit there, but as far as the, my, my, I consider my job here is looking at what's been presented, what the bylaws say we have to have in order to approve, whether you like it or not, or whether I like it or not, this is what the law says. Okay, I don't think we can say no to them if they meet all the specifications, and they do. If they were one foot off something, you can say no, but they meet everything, all the setbacks, all the distances, the land, everything is met according to the law.
And we should keep in mind that originally, these lots were residential, until that area was zoned business back when, what, around 1980 or so.
You know, but one of the, I understand that technically, they meet all the requirements.
Right.
But one of the, one of the things, and one of the things that they address here is that the residential, and they say this in their letter to the zoning board, the residential zones typically present a noxious harmful or hazardous environment, the majority surrounding properties are currently used as residential, and they are. And we believe the residential dwelling presents a more socially, socially and economically acceptable solution to the neighborhood. And what I'm trying to say is that generally, you might be right about that in the particular locations that you go into, but in this particular location, he's not right, okay? It's only going to make it worse for the people who actually like to have some kind of quiet enjoyment of their property while they're, while they're at home.
You may have two little old ladies moving in the house, that'd be real quiet, so you don't know that.
Well, let me, let me...
Can it just be a side, a side here?
I wish it was two, I wish it was two little old ladies that would move into the property, okay? I wish that, but I'm not...
Do you know who's moving in?
You don't know.
No, I have no idea.
That's the whole thing.
Let's not make a decision based on speculation.
Listen, listen to me, I'm not speculating. I'm telling you what the neighborhood is like already. You don't live there, I do, and that's why I'm here, okay? I've had, I, I hear enough. You have, and, and no, and, and I've had, listen, no, no.
No, sir. Yeah, I'm the chairman. I control the meeting.
I'm not...
I think we've...
I'm not trying to disrupt your meeting.
You have to say enough.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Go on.
Is there any other input regarding this property?
Anything we need from the engineer?
I'd like a...
Monitor is mine. Monitor is mine.
Do you have anything further to add?
No, sir.
All right. I'd like a motion to close this hearing, please.
Made.
Second.
Motion made, second, to close the hearing. Any discussion about closing the hearing? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Want to oppose? Now, we have closed the hearing, so we're not accepting any more input. We can now deliberate and decide on this. Would anybody care to expand on their strengths and weaknesses and, or make the motion? Motion would be to permit residential use of this property according to all bylaws, in accordance to all bylaws.
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Bansky's made a motion?
Yeah, I'll second.
Mr. Bansky has seconded. Is there any further discussion on this motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please?
Aye.
Any opposed? Were you in favor?
I said aye, yeah.
All in favor, not opposed, the motion carries. I declare this hearing closed at 7:37. We will open the identical, identical hearing for the other property. The Lakeville Zoning Board of Appeals, acting in accordance with Mass. Journal laws, Chapter 48, as amended, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday, November 21st, at 7:15 PM. The Lakeville Public Library, 4 Precinct Street, upon the petition of Gerald Crosby for a special permit to allow the construction of a residential dwelling on a lot that is own business. The property is located at Freetown Street, M34-B2-L2, which is also number 34-2-11-02, Article Lot 11, as provided by the bylaws. And since everybody has already heard all the input on, for the previous hearing, and this is, and, and all the memos we have are for both lots because the lots are essentially identical, except for it was a septic issue of the first one, I believe.
Yes.
And that one's been cleared away. There's really no need for me to take the time to read these memos unless somebody wants me to. Is there any, any comment or decision on this second identical petition, right, second almost identical one?
Can I ask a question?
You may.
Where there's no parking signs all over the street in that area, where are the construction vehicles and all the people working on it?
That's, I don't know, they will clear, they will, they will clear land and pull in off the street.
Are you prime?
I am prime, I will, I'm from prime.
Okay. So prime will park not on, in front of my house?
We're, we're not doing the construction. It'll be a direction, we, yeah, we designed the projects.
Okay.
Contractors come in.
And, so answer the question to the best of your ability, though, if you can. What will the contractors do?
The contractors will clear the lot and make space also for safety, sure.
Do you know who's gonna do the construction?
Um, I, I believe it's gonna be Billy Logan.
Who's he at?
Middle block.
Mr. Evans? Same approval, happy to have him.
We have, I know, I don't wanna put Jan in the spot, but she's a neighbor. If you have any comments as a neighbor or anything to say, or you're better off to say nothing.
I, I have my own opinions, but I'd rather not...
Okay. Don't wanna put you in the spot.
Thank you, Joe, for asking that.
As a taxpayer, you know, you're allowed to do that.
I don't want any kind of conflict appearance of it.
Any comments, questions, issues on the second petition? Then I'd like a motion to close the hearing, please.
Second, make a motion, close the hearing.
I have a motion made, in second, to close the hearing. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. George.
Not opposed? And now deliberate on the second. Is there anything worth deliberating on this? It's identical with the first one. I'd like a motion on the petition, please. I'll make a motion. Mr. Curtis has made a motion. Mr. Curtis has made a motion to grant the request for special permit.
I'll second it.
Mr. Bansky has seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Not opposed?
Not opposed.
You didn't need to bring your tripod.
Thank you, appreciate the time, Joe.
Thank you. You're welcome. Do we have any other business? Okay, two curbs.
Second.